Yeah, we'll call.
Yeah, it should be a fairly swift move.
Yeah.
Are we done yet?
No, no, yeah, that was my fault.
Okay, and Adam did contact me, so he with the roads and he got a little late start. He said he may be a few minutes late, so.
Can you hear me, Jim?
Jim.
Can you hear me?
Hey, everybody turn your mics on, please.
Hello, Jim.
I can, I can hear him in the shell, but I can't hear everybody else. No, I'm serious, that's.
That's why I asked if you could hear me.
I could hear you, yeah. If you speak like that, we don't have a problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's awful if you can't hear.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, when you talk or is this.
All those races and all that singing and all that band playing in your ear.
Yeah, and three years on the flight.
Oh, yeah, that'll probably do it too, huh?
That's when it started, yeah.
Three years.
Well, three and a half years.
Did you use hearing protection then? You know, that's back a few years.
It was just like putting this over ears. Yeah, we did have ear protection, but when the F four fan was on the catapults.
It doesn't make any difference.
And they fired up both afterburners on that thing, it was just like someone took needles and was sticking it through your eardrums.
How about some of those guys, World War II, in the battleships, shooting those guns off?
Oh, yeah.
They had, they had to be deaf when it was all over.
Yeah, we had six inch guns on the carrier and then fire those off once in a while and they'd knock the dust off the ceilings and.
Okay, are we going?
Yep.
Recording?
Recording.
All right, it is 6:33. This is the January 2nd meeting, regular meeting of the Arlington City Council, first meeting of 2018. Happy New Year all, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we will have roll call. Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell, it said he would be late, so we will mention when he walks in, but four councilmembers present at this time. Item three, approve the agenda. Is there any changes in the agenda as presented? Hearing none, a motion is in order.
Make motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Ben.
Ben?
Ben.
Ben.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following items. Approval of the bills, approve appointing John Zaski as Arlington Police Chief, approve, I'm sorry, word a police chief, Arlington Fire Chief, approve appointing Corey Carpenter as second assistant chief in the Fire Department, approve appointing Thomas Pomplun as safety and training officer in the Fire Department, and then the personnel agenda of which there were no contents this, this meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Batchor to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving on to addressing the council, are there any of those present this evening that wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, move on to announcements, item number six.
First announcement is just that there will be a planning and zoning public hearing regarding the interim use permit for the storage bins for Northland Drying. That will be coming up on Thursday, January 4th at 7:00 PM, and Northland Drying again is the business that's moving into a portion of the Seneca building, so we're very excited to have them coming to town. Second item is just a notification that the city offices will be closed on Monday, January 15th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. With that said, the following announcement is that because we will not be open that day, the next council meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, January 16th at 6:30. And then last but not least is the announcement that the League of Minnesota Cities is having their newly elected officials 2018 Leadership Conference, which will be held in Brooklyn Park on January 26th and 27th, and we do have several councilmembers who are able to attend that, so that's wonderful.
Okay, any questions in regard to the announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications, item seven.
Just wanted to share with the council that we received a nice thank you letter from the Arlington Chamber and the Arla Dazzle Committee for the efforts that the Police Department as well as Public Works put forth in terms of helping to plan and schedule the 2017 Arla Dazzle event.
All right, were any questions on that? I presume not. We'll move on to resolutions, of which there are quite a few. Resolutions this evening, Resolution 1-2018, mayoral appointments. You have in front of you the, in your packet, the appointments for this year. As of when these were printed, there was one vacancy. That has been filled, and that is on the Shade Tree Committee. Term, they're all one-year terms on that committee. Stern is going to fill that vacant spot. Do have a point I'd like to bring out on Planning and Zoning Committee. Mr. Darnell Helverson serves on that committee. His term is due to expire, or the end of 2019. When he was elected, he was part of the orderly annexation area. That orderly annexation area has since expired. There is no orderly annexation area at this point. My recommendation would be to, I know it's not according to the regulations of the planning and zoning, I am hoping the council will go along with me, and that is to leave Darnell Helverson on that committee to serve. He is an active member of the committee, he's engaged, he is interested in what's going on with that committee, just live, happens to live a little ways out of the city limits. And when, again, when he was elected, that area that he lives in was part of the orderly annexation. I would hope I have the council's approval to make that exception and allow him to finish his term.
Just a question, is that orderly annexation area going to be renewed?
There was one conversation held with the township prior to its expiring, and it was in regard to expanding the orderly annexation area, and that met with some pretty stiff opposition. My thought would be to approach the township again in hopes of at least renewing the orderly annexation area as it was. In other words, without any expansion. We can certainly try, in negotiations, we can try to get it expanded to a larger area, but at least I would, I would hope we could get it renewed to, to the way it was, so I would hope I have the council's blessings to move forward and, and start some conversation with the, with the Township Board again in regard to trying to get that renewed. Attorney Arnison, how, I mean, you know, there wasn't orderly annexation agreement in place until August, and it expired. What, is it, is it a huge job to get it going again?
No.
I mean, is it like starting at, at zero again?
Well, we would have to, in a sense, start it from zero anyway, because at the time the, the old orderly annexation ordinance was passed, the laws and regulations were somewhat different, and the state had advised us that when we came to renew it, if that were to happen, there are many of the sections that would have to be redrawn.
Okay.
So, I guess, in that sense, it doesn't really matter. It would have been pretty much starting from scratch anyway.
Even if they would have been agreeable to it?
Even if they had agreed to just roll it over, we would have had to basically rewritten it.
Okay.
To comply with current state regulations. And also, you know, part of the old orderly annexation area was, in fact, next to the city, and so we would also have had to have amended it to take account of that fact, and re-described, you know, what is now in the orderly annexation area as opposed to what is actually in the city limits now.
Okay, and that's changed, as far as?
Yes.
Some, some boundaries have changed.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, refresh my memory, what area are we talking about again? For the orderly annex?
Order just all around the city. That would be the top map there. The non-colored area, I would presume. The gray area around there would be what was, what was the orderly annexation agreement area, and now that's expired.
Okay.
So at least I'd like to get it back to that. I mean, ideally, it would be, Planning and Zoning have made the recommendation to expand that area, and we can certainly enter into discussion with that, with an effort to do that, but it depends on what kind of reception we get from the Township Board.
What does our policy state as far as having somebody on the Planning and Zoning Commission that's not within city limits and with us not having the orderly annexation in there right now?
It doesn't allow for it.
Well, I, you know, unfortunately, I, I feel like either we have to stick with our policies or, or change them. There's, there's reasons for, for them being in place, and I suppose that's to give the people that are, I suppose, in our city limits, their voice to be heard on the Planning and Zoning.
Well, one, one possible workaround of that is that Darnell was eligible when he was appointed, and he still has part of his term left. So, you know, I suppose we could argue that, well, he probably wouldn't be eligible to be reappointed, but I, I think we're probably in a little gray area about whether or not, you know, now that the orderly annexation area has expired, whether or not we have to terminate his term early. And I guess, there are two different issues there. I would, I would say that once he's served his term though, we, we either change our policy or, you know, we have to replace him with somebody else. But I guess the mayor'd ask what the council's feeling was on that, so.
Well, I mean, Darnell is a, is a active member on the committee and is engaged, so
I appreciate him being on there. I just, I guess my hesitation is with the, the orderly annexation being expired, unless we're gonna really try to get that moving, you know, he'd be an asset to be on there if, if we had that in place again.
When does his current term end?
2019.
2019, so he has two years left.
I would be, you know, this is just me, I'd be all in favor of leaving him there, at least till the end of his term, since he was in the agreement. It's not his fault. The guy does a heck of a job. It's pretty hard to find people willing to come in and do a committed job. A lot of people get on these committees and really don't put forth a lot.
Yeah.
So if he's willing to do the work and for what he's done, and he, well, I don't have a problem. You know, I guess we'll have to cross that other bridge when we get to it. Maybe we aren't, I mean, if Attorney Arnison thinks we're okay with keeping him till the end of his term.
Right.
Then I am fine with that.
Okay.
Well, I'd say it's, it's at least in a gray area. I guess it's not clear to me that we have to terminate him now, since he was appointed at a time that he was eligible, and his term is not yet expired, so.
What about modifying the, the ruling that we're using so that he does qualify?
We could, we could do that, and I know some cities have on planning and zoning and/or economic development, things like that, taking a little more regional approach.
Just agree to let him serve his term, as he was.
Well, I don't know that we'd want to change the code, you know, just for one guy. I think if we wanted to consider it, it'd probably be more, you know, do we want to change the code to say that, you know, just to throw out an example, that if they're within a half mile of city limits, or if they work in town, or, you know, own some property in town but don't live in town, you know, those are the kind of workarounds other cities have used.
I think that would open up a can of worms if we, unless we had a real policy change or we get the orderly annexation agreement going again.
Well, I'm hoping if, if the Township Board is receptive to it, we can get the orderly annexation back in force by the time his term ends, so then everything will be okay again.
That's kinda what I was thinking, it might work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only other question that I have about the appointments is, I believe each member can only be on one committee, is that correct? Other than councilmembers, citizens, per policy.
I'm not sure.
I don't recall anything in the code about that. I think it may have been kind of an unwritten policy in the past, the idea of spreading the.
Right.
Spreading the good around.
And you, there is one that is, that is on more than, I do see one.
Yeah.
Former Mayor Kraft.
Yeah.
Yeah, serving on two.
I just thought that was policy, so then, if that's not policy, I, I mean, I'm fine with it, but if it's policy, I don't want to see us breaking policy over something so silly.
Yeah, I don't believe there's anything in the code about it. Again, I think it's been a practice in the past, though, try and find different people.
Yeah, and I, I did. I mean, it's, it's hard to find people that'll serve, but.
That's true.
But I would have liked to find someone else also. Not that Mayor Kraft isn't qualified in both areas, he is, but. I guess if this exception is being made, I would prefer to have someone make a motion as far as Darnell Helverson's position, just so we go on record, is either supporting or not supporting that?
I would make a motion that we allow Mr. Helverson to finish his current term, which would then give us time to see how the annexation goes.
Okay.
And I guess we'll, if it doesn't go through with them, we're gonna have to look at it again.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you, do you want me to repeat that?
Just the last half, you kind of faded away.
Okay. I think I said that we would allow for Darnell to finish his current term, and then go from there after the annexation's done, or if it isn't, we'll cross that bridge then.
Okay.
But for the time being, since we're not really doing anything real wrong.
Okay.
Let him finish the term.
Yep, got that, Pat? All right, motion by Councilmember Hattelstead, second by Councilmember Batchor to allow Darnell Helverson to finish the current term he is serving on in planning and zoning. Any questions? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Okay, then you have in front of you the, the entire list of appointees, and that would be Resolution 1-2018.
Oh, I thought that's what we just voted on.
No, we just voted on the exception.
Darnell.
Yeah.
I'll introduce Resolution 1-2018, a resolution ratifying mayoral appointments in committees.
Second. Councilmember Batchor introduced Resolution 1-2018 regarding mayoral appointments. That was seconded by Councilmember Highland. Is there any more discussion? Vote by roll call, Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
By the way, Councilmember Cowell is right. Would the minutes please reflect that? Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, resolutions adopted. Item F, Resolution 2-2018, appointing city administrator. And that is appointing Patrick Melvin as our city administrator, and it would be, according to the terms of his contract, you've had a chance to read that, that's been in your packet.
Make a motion to, or I'll introduce Resolution 2-2018, appointing Patrick Melvin, city administrator.
Second?
Second.
Resolution 2-2018 was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattelstead, and that is a resolution appointing city administrator and authorizing the city of Arlington to enter into contract with Patrick Melvin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call, vote, Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstead.
Yes.
All approved, none, none opposed, and the resolution is adopted. Resolution 3-2018, Designating a City Depository. And that is Resolution Design, Designating an Official City Depository as the Arlington State Bank.
I will introduce Resolution 3-2018, Designing, Designating the Arlington State Bank as the City Depository.
Second.
Resolution 3-2018 was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattelstead. That is a resolution Designating the Official City Depository. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, vote, Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
And Councilmember Highland.
Abstain.
Four in favor, one abstention, or four in favor, none opposed, one abstention. The resolution passes. Item number four-2018, Authorizing Signature Authority for City Accounts, and that is a resolution which would authorize the mayor, vice mayor, city administrator, and deputy city clerk as official signees, authority for signing on city accounts.
I'll introduce Resolution 4-2018, Authorizing Signature Authority for City Accounts.
Second.
Okay, Resolution 4-2018 has been introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Cowell. The resolution is authorizing signature authority for city accounts, and those being authorized are the mayor, the vice mayor, city administrator, and deputy city clerk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Hattelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Abstain.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted by a four to one vote, four to nothing vote with one abstention. Item, Resolution 5-2018, Resolution Designating an Official City Newspaper, that being the Arlington Enterprise.
I'll introduce Resolution 5-2018, Resolution Designating the Arlington Enterprise as the official city newspaper.
Second. Resolution 5-2018 was introduced by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Highland, and that resolution is Designating the Official City Newspaper as the Arlington Enterprise. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted by a five to zero vote. Resolution 6-2018, Resolution Approving the 2018 City Calendar, and you have a copy of that in your packet.
Make a, introduce Resolution 6-2018, 2018 Calendar of Public Meetings.
Okay, second. Resolution 6-2018 was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Highland, and that is a resolution approving the 2018 City Calendar. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstead.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. And then on to Resolution 7-2018, Accepting Donation from Jim Craft, Craft Cabinets.
I'll introduce Resolution 7-2018, Accept a Donation from Jim Craft, Craft Cabinets for the Tree Program.
Second.
Councilmember Highland introduced Resolution 7-2018, and second by Councilmember Batchor, and that is a resolution accepting a donation, it is designating its use, that being a donation from Jim Craft of Craft Cabinets, the donation to be used for the Tree Program. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, vote, Councilmember Hattelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, resolution is adopted.
We need more people to donate more money. You hear that out there? We'd have trees all over the place.
Get the car dealerships up first, huh?
I've done my fair share on trees.
Councilmember eight, or Councilmember, Resolution 8-2018, Accepting a Donation in the Amount of $630 from VFW Post 6031 for Chairs at Four Seasons Park. Just to clarify, those chairs are for, actually for the Lion Center, are they not, for the building at Four Seasons Park?
Correct.
Okay, can we change the wording on that, please?
Yep.
Just so we know, somewhere down the line, who donated the chairs at the Lion Center?
I'll introduce Resolution 8-2018, Accepting a Donation in the Amount of $630, $630 from the VFW Post 6031 for Chairs inside the, the building at Four Seasons Park.
Second.
Resolution 8-2018 was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattelstead, and that is a resolution accepting a donation and designating its use. The donation is for $630, it's from the VFW Post 6031, for Chairs to be used at the Lion Center, Four Seasons Park. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, vote, Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstead.
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution 9-2018, that is Authorizing the City of Arlington to Enter an Agreement with 101 Development Resources, Inc. for Building Inspection Services.
We got a question.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 9-2018, Authorize the City of Arlington to Enter into an Agreement with 101 Development Resources, Inc. for Building Inspection Services.
Second.
Resolution 9-2018. Resolution nine dash twenty eighteen was introduced by councilmember Yashewski, second, Yashewski, seconded by councilmember Highland. And that being the authorization of the city of Arlington to enter into agreement with One-on-One Development Resources, Inc. for building inspection services. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Darren Hasselford, do you have some words for the council, please?
You got you, thanks for inviting me, yeah.
You might need to push the button there on the mic to turn it on. There we go.
Hey, can you hear me all right? Well, thanks for inviting me. I guess it's been a while since I've been in to see the council here, which Pat and I talked about. It might be good to get, get in here semi-annually and, you know, to meet you folks and kind of give you updates on how things are going. I was sitting here and I was handed this agenda for, for new officials coming in for, kind of a communication in a crisis handout, which I thought was kind of interesting. You know, just, I'm gonna kind of talk about that just for a second because it intrigued me a little bit. I have two towns this year that got hit with hailstorms, Winthrop being one of them. And it was, it's, it's been a challenge to deal with that problem over there. You know, towns that normally does sixty, seventy permits, you know, they're on three hundred and ninety-one now. And one of the things I did, and I've learned over the years, because I've been here now, I'm going on my eleventh year. In May, it'll be eleven years here already, so. But I've kind of adapted with technology to, to work with what I have out there. What we try to do to make it easier for the people in town is do over-the-counter permits for those maintenance type projects that people come in for, roofing, siding, windows, that type of stuff. I have found that that is very helpful when you have a crisis situation. Especially, you know, when you have a hailstorm, and you're going through the permits like we are. The nice thing is, people can come in, they can pull it, and they can go. The biggest challenge for us in those situations is catching the guys that don't have licenses working in town. And, and we typically catch them, so it's, it, it's the way it goes. But anyways, I think I'll just turn over to you guys, if you guys like to ask me questions. You probably have more for me than I'd have with you, so.
If I can interject, I guess it kind of jogged my memory when your contract came up that I don't think we've had a discussion about the fee schedule for a while. And if I understand correctly, we're at, I think it was in your contract, we're at sixty-five percent of the nineteen eighty-eight state schedule? And are we, are we behind the times?
Well, that's my fee schedule. You guys use the nineteen ninety-seven fee schedule.
Oh, okay.
So you're, you're on a higher schedule than what I charge at. That's just for plan of view purposes. It's, it's kind of, you, you have a different fee schedule than any town I have, I mean, it's, it's different here. And there's some pluses and minuses to it. For me, the minuses are, it takes a lot longer to put together a billing for you guys because I go through every inspection I've done, and I bill for that inspection, you know? Which, I thought about it, you know, it's, it may, and that's not all bad. I mean, because now you know exactly what you're getting billed for. Because there's some things that, there's some permits that people don't call me for. I mean, so you're not getting billed for them. If I don't show up to inspect it, there's no bill. So from that standpoint, now, some of my jurisdictions I work in, they say, well, if they don't call you, what, what's, what do you do, you know? Well, I don't kick the door in, you know, we, people have a hundred and eighty days to call for their first inspection. Okay, that's what the law says. Typically, say on a roofing project, if people don't call, I just, I just, you know, that's how I know that there was no call, there was no, nothing done. Because my other option I have is I can show up, I can say, tear off all the shingles, let's start over. Of course, that's easy for me to do because I get in my car and drive home, and then they start calling people in town. That's usually you guys and gals, so. Most cities just say, hey, you know what, they just let it go. They're not gonna deal with it. Because, especially in smaller towns, they don't want to twist arms like that, so. What I did with the city with this, you know, everything is based on hourly here for me, except for plan reviews. The city charges at what's called the nineteen ninety-seven fee schedule, they charge a seventy percent of that fee schedule. Which I think is, I think you're at a good place there, I don't think that's bad. And then, if there's a plan review, let's say, for example, we do a, the Northland Drive project. We're, we're doing the plan review on that right now. Let's say the permit on that's a thousand dollars for the city. The plan review is gonna be six hundred and fifty dollars of that, okay? Because the plan review takes a lot of time in many cases, you gotta do a lot of digging and talking with the architects and everybody, whatever. And then, my fee schedule, I'm working off from for that plan review is off the nineteen eighty-eight fee schedule, so I'm kind of back there ways. So my fee is probably gonna be closer to, say, four hundred dollars. So the city gets that two hundred and fifty dollar plan review fee plus the permit fee, that's all the cities. Then I get, I get the smaller plan review fee, then I get an hourly rate for doing inspections. That's how that, that's how it all works. So it, you know, it takes a little more time for me to put that together. My other communities, what I do is I just take that ninety-seven fee schedule, instead of seventy percent of it, that the city charges, I'll take sixty percent of it, okay? And that's easy because then, you know, when I bill, it's just, you just add a quick formula in and you're done. But now I've created all the, all the spreadsheets, so the nineteen eighty-eight kicks out for me every time I do it now. So it works out for me that way. Which, which is fine, I mean, it's, it is what it is. There was question about, and, and it's a valid question, about why I would be coming in asking for an increase again after we did this a few years ago. The reason being is, you know, when I look back at my history here, if I was just doing two percent increase over the ten, eleven years, I'd be at about fifty-five dollars right now, okay? And that's kind of where we're at. If I was to go at three percent, we'd be up above that, of course, we'd be up closer to sixty. But I was driving down the road the other day, I heard about some city administrator that got hired in St. Peter or something, and he agreed to a two and a half percent increase, you know, the coal would increase. And I thought, well, okay, how about two percent? I mean, is that, is that in line? So that's where, that's kind of where I came in at the number. And I thought, I just wanted to get it up to speed because, you know, we kind of, we kind of got, got off track there for a while, so. But that's, that's the only reason I set that number.
So your request is for additional five dollars?
Yes, yep.
Looking at the, I just have a few questions in regard to the contract. One thing that I visited with city administrator Melvin about is that, as far as, and I don't know how the other members of the council feel about this, but one of the items in the contract is that you attend the city council meeting occasionally. And whether it be quarterly or semi-annually, again, I don't know how the council feels about that. But I, I'd sort of like to hear how things are going.
Sure.
What issues you maybe have that, that we, we should know about, difficulties or whatever. And, and the good news too, of things that are happening. Because whenever there's building permits, there's, there's good news going on. So, again, I don't know if, I, I think monthly is probably overkill. But certainly quarterly or semi-annually would be, would be more than.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I was saying ahead of time, I thought semi-annually.
Yeah.
Just because, number one, I've got a number of other jurisdictions as well. And I also have a kid in school that's in every event she can get into, so. So she's got me around quite a bit too, so. So, yeah, that's, that's fine, I mean, if we come back in June or something and, and hit you at the end of the year, that's fine too. If that works for you folks, so.
Is that, everybody seems to be nodding their head in agreement? Part of the additional work under the contract I noticed is, and tell us about how, you know, your, not even your experiences, we don't want to know the particulars, but evaluations of a dilapidated building, hazardous ev, excavations that, but I guess we have a number of buildings that I can think of around town. Are you ever called in on those to take a look and see if that building is even, even safe to be standing?
Yeah, typically, I will take my lead from the city administrator. So if the city administrator goes out and finds it, and the reason that is, is I can go around and find all kinds of way to make money if I want to. Okay, there are some in town that, in, some blocks even, that, you know, that I've gone into and I thought, wow, you know, we really need to look at this. You, you gotta kind of watch your step when you go down this road, I'll, I'll explain. I'm doing this in about four other jurisdictions right now, we're going after dilapidated structures. The problem is if you jump in with both feet and go after all of them at once, that's okay with me because I'm gonna write up reports and I'm gonna get paid for it, I mean, but from a city standpoint, a lot of these structures, the people, number one, either aren't gonna pay to get it fixed. They aren't paying their taxes right now at the level they should be. A lot of the, the properties are vacant, people just leave. And when that happens, when we start pressing them to repair it, they're gonna walk away. Then it's gonna go ultimately default on taxes, they aren't gonna pay them. Well, it's gonna get to a point where it's gonna become awarded to the state, and then they award it back to the county, and the county gives it back to the city, now we got it, now the city owns it. Now we have to get rid of it, okay? And that's gonna cost something. It's kind of a slippery slope that way. So if we know ahead of time when we go into this, how do we want to handle this? And if we have a lot of it in our town, it might make sense to break the town into quadrants. This year, we're gonna do this section, next year, we're gonna do that section, you know? And pick out the three or four, you know, structures we want to have looked at and possibly removed. I've probably removed forty homes in my day, you know, that I've, I've had to have them removed and raised. It's, the cost of it can be, you know, significant. If you have a large structure, I don't know if we have any larger we want to have removed, then we talk about another avenue I would take, to take care of that from a cost standpoint. It's a, it's just something, you know, when you go after it, there's plenty of them I know in town that I could go after right now in a, not bad an eye yet. I mean, they're in tough shape. But when we do that, I just want to make sure everyone's on board and we're all going down the same path. You know, because you know, you know it's gonna happen, I'm gonna go after that house, and they're gonna say, what about that guy over there?
Sure.
You know, why didn't you go after him? So now I'm jumping over there, and pretty soon we got twenty of them we're going after. And ultimately, once it gets to that point, then we have them off the tax rolls too, we don't want that to happen either. You know, ultimately, you want to see them be refurbished and saved and keep them on the tax rolls, if possible. Because a lot of these houses, once they're gone, no one's gonna come in and put a new house in next to it, you know, it's dumb.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, I think one of the things on the houses that need work would be a safety factor. Whether it's safe for the people to live in the house, whether it be mechanical or electrical or plumbing or lack thereof of anything else. You know, it's pretty hard to see driving by on the outside.
Yeah, usually the way I learned about something is a contractor was in someplace and he told me about something, and then I learned about it. And then it's time to do something. Some of these I've seen recently, not, you know, they're more, I don't really want to give away where I'm looking at, but it's, let's just say it's on the southwest part of town, not far west. But that way. And there's like one block where you could fire up the bulldozer and just let it go. I mean, it's bad, it's really bad. And I just saw these like three weeks ago. And I've been driving, I don't drive down that corner real often, so I hadn't been down there. When I went down there, it's like, wow, I didn't realize how bad it was. And that's something that I think we need to address. I mean, the thing is, if you don't address it, we have people living in a hazardous home, you know, children, you know, whoever's living there. It's, it's kicking your property values in the rear end, you know? Nobody wants to live next to it, it's a problem. So I think you're going down the right path. Now, some of the things you're also talking about sound like a housing code. And a lot of times, a lot of these properties, you know, eighty percent of them might be rental property. And this is another area where a lot of jurisdictions right now, and I'm kind of getting overwhelmed with how many of them want to adopt rental ordinances for rental housing.
We're in the process of that, Darren.
So, so when we get to that point, I'm doing this in, in Gaylord right now, that was my first experience in the rental world. I didn't go out seeking it, but they needed it, so I, I actually put everything on a tablet. So I've got everything right there with me. I just go in and march through it, and then when I get done, I send a PDF file off to the city. And down the road we go. And the city can look at it and say, wow, this is a problem. The key is, how do you want to handle that so that the city's not, you know, there's a lot of capital all the way to, to pay for this? Of course, and you look at licensing fees for the, for the landlords, and they all come in and they ask, they're having, I, I get it. But one of my jurisdictions that does this, we had a lot of people that were calling me, I've got mold in my house. Well, I tell them, well, in college I failed chemistry, so I'm not gonna get put on the stand and say I know something about mold. Yeah, we know what it is when you see it, you know? But typically, you'll get the public health nurse involved, I'll get involved, sometimes the fire chief. A lot of times, I'll bring the police chief or a police officer with me because the people tend to be, in some cases, hostile. So you get involved in that part of it, and you would, you know, obviously, you're putting together your own language into your ordinance. But this town, what they did is they said, you know what, every landlord's gonna put up a licensing fee. And I thought this was kind of creative, of like two hundred and fifty bucks, whatever it was, I don't even know what it was. And, and I was really pushing the town to do this, not that I wanted to do it, but I said, you gotta do something. I am getting calls nonstop, you know, and, you know, the problem is I go to talk to the tenant, and there's not a lot that the building code addresses regarding mold. It doesn't, you know, it's, the, the code talks about public health, safety, and welfare, but, you know, they don't say anything about mold. So I was like, okay, how do I deal with this? And what ended up happening was, they took the money from all these landlords in town, and everybody paid their two hundred and fifty bucks. And then, they gave the landlords the ordinance, and they gave the tenants the ordinance. So whenever a new tenant moves in, the tenant gets an ordinance, the landlord has to give it to them. So the tenant can see what the rules are, okay? Then they, they're policing themselves is what they're doing. I've had one call now in three years, and I was getting them like every other day, it seemed like, just nonstop. So if I have to go back in there, well, guess what? Now you're paying me hourly to come and visit your house. If you don't want to fix it, I'm gonna show up and I'm gonna write you up that you're gonna fix it. And then, you still have to fix it, you know? So it's actually been very effective, and I was kind of surprised how effective it's been. Other towns like Gaylord, they just, every three years, we're gonna get into all these places just to make sure, you know? So every three years, there are places that have to be looked at. I, I don't really care either way, I mean, whatever way the city wants to go. If, you know, that, that one is not a real threatening way, but it puts the landlords on notice that, hey, you know what? Your tenants are gonna be notified, and everyone's gonna be falling off the same rulebook. And if you fail, you're gonna pay. So they've been pretty good so far, I mean, the only concern with that is if the tenants have the understanding of staying on top of what their rights are, you know? Because you're gonna be the ones that adopt the ordinance. You know, and if it doesn't work, then you can always go to the other ordinance like Gaylord does, you know? Whatever works for your city.
Well, I know what we're looking at is trying to keep as much administrative work out of it. So I think we were leaning towards the one where they both had their books and they policing themselves, like you say.
Correct.
And then when there's an issue that arises, the landlord has to take care of it, and if he doesn't, then.
Then I come in.
Then you come in.
Then we bring, yeah. And, and it's, it works out well because, you know, if you look at the big picture of things, you know? The, the problem is the tenant and the landlord, when I show up, like, well, who's responsible? You know, I'm looking at it like, okay, so your washer was, you know, overfilled and spilling over the floor. So did that create the mold in the corner, or did the fact that he has a broken out window create the mold? So now who do I, how do I decide who's gonna pay for it? This is not my role, that's not what I do. The thing is, if there's mold and it's really in there, into the walls, now they can not only get, they gotta pay to have that removed. Now, they may have to have the studs in the house replaced, now they gotta get a building permit too. Then they get to see me more often.
They got a big can of worms.
Yeah, then they get me a little more often, so. So there's, yeah, I, I like where you're going with it, you're going down a good path, so.
Okay, is there any more?
Okay, is there any more questions or comments for Mr. Haslett?
Well, just, uh, just to expand a little bit, uh, we have, and I'm sure will continue to utilize, uh, an informal, uh, enforcement approach, city staff, Darren and I, uh, basically just trying to persuade people, you know, to fix things up. Uh, there was a house just south of my office that was in bad shape, and we determined that the occupant was buying it on a contract, and we contacted the actual owners. And they, it turned out, we're, uh, on top of the situation, they've actually taken the house back, and now they're fixing it up. But I think the city involvement, uh, speeded up the process, because the, uh, the, uh, the owner didn't live in town, and I don't think they're quite aware of how bad the situation was, till the city started complaining about it. And we have some other situations we're looking at, at, uh, another house that Darren has been involved in, and we have a discussion going with the owner now, that's also a contract for deed purchase situation. And, uh, the owner is now supposedly intervening with the contract buyer to figure out what's going on with the house. So, um, you know, that, that's always our first approach, is, you know, trying to persuade.
Yeah, I call it compliance, um, compliance versus enforcement. I tell people, you know, there are people that do what I do that have done what I do in the area here, that they aren't around here anymore, but they get out of the car and they got a big hammer in their hand, and they just start popping you with it, you know. And I tell people, I don't, that's not how I operate, but there is a hammer in the trunk, if I had to go get it, you know. We did have, uh, one recently here in town, and I'm not gonna say who was, it's, it's not what it's about, but they were doing some terrible work not too far from here, so, uh, we had to educate them on how it had to be. You know, and, uh, it, it's, you'll find people at the strangest times, I was actually up here at the community center for when Santa was here. And when I left, I saw where they were working, and I stopped, and I, the wife says, oh, gosh. Can't you just leave it alone, I said, that won't take long, and a half hour later, I was getting back in the car, you know, and I said, yeah, it's a real train wreck, you know, but, uh, yeah, we don't like to, uh, you know, I, I've been in small towns now for twenty-five years, you know, I mean, I, I get it, you know, I mean, I, I don't like to, uh, beat people down. Sometimes you don't have a choice, but, you know, we try to, we try to work with everybody, you know, so, anyways.
Well, I've had comments from contractors in, in the area, and they very much appreciate their work with you, and the way they're treated by you, and, uh, and, uh, so, um, you know, they feel that, that you're an ally, not an enemy.
Well, there's, yeah, we got, fortunately, you know, I, I've been, uh, you know, I've been very fortunate here, uh, in this county, that we've got a lot of good builders here. I mean, uh, if you're not from here, and I don't know you, I might look at you a little closer, um, but, uh, our builders in the county, we got good ones, Arlington, I don't worry too much about these guys here, they're, they're good at what they do, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
We'll see you in June.
Okay, so we have a resolution, uh, nine dash twenty eighteen, that was introduced by Councilmember Yashewski, seconded by Councilmember Highland. And then it's a resolution authorizing the City of Arlington to enter into agreement with, uh, One on One Development Resources, Inc., and that is at a rate of fifty-five dollars an hour. And you have the packet with the, uh, contract copy. Any further discussion? All right, vote by rule call vote, Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, resolution is adopted.
Well, thank you, I'm honored to be here, thanks again.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Resolution, uh, oh, okay, resolution ten dash twenty eighteen, and that is under unfinished business, uh, the agreement with the, uh, MINDOT on ownership of the rectangular rapid flash beacon crosswalk warning, warning system. Pat, I'm gonna let you expand on that.
Councilmembers, we've kinda gone back and forth on, on this several times. Uh, I think that we've actually, it's a good thing we did go back and forth, because I think we've got some, uh, some documentation, some background information, which was included in your packet. There was an email from Scott Thompson, who is a, uh, individual with, uh, MINDOT, who's been working with Kirby recently to try and address some of the issues that, uh, you have identified, which is the, the beacons going off simply by cars driving by. We have identified maybe some questions related to the batteries that are in the unit. And so, uh, was very happy when we got an email from Scott Thompson dated, uh, December nineteenth, where he said, uh, in the spirit of partnership and cooperation, in the next few weeks, MINDOT will furnish and install new batteries for the systems, and will continue to work with our Public Works Director to resolve any concerns, so. I was very happy to hear that they're willing to make sure those machines are, do their best to make sure, sure those machines are working, or that one crosswalk machine, uh, is working prior to us accepting responsibility. And then also, uh, Scott provided me with a copy of a letter dated, uh, February sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, uh, basically, uh, outlining a response to, uh, then city administrator Matt Yannick, uh, regarding the, uh, regarding MINDOT putting in the, uh, flashing beacons to bring greater attention to the fact that it is a crosswalk, so. If you have any questions on any of that, uh, I'm sure myself or Attorney Arneson would be happy to try and respond. Otherwise, uh, included in your packet is the agreement from MINDOT, uh, asking us to accept responsibility for the crosslight beacons there at, uh, Adams and Five.
Any questions, comments on that?
Scott Thompson is there since two thousand and thirteen, and we're on our third city administrator. This crosswalk is taking its toll.
So what you're saying, it's not Ben, it's the crosswalk? You're cleared, Ben.
I, I'm happy to hear that they responded, and they're gonna take the steps, you know, appropriate steps to bring it up to speed for us before we officially take it on ourselves, so. With that being said, I'll introduce resolution ten twenty eighteen, an agreement to provide, uh, provide the, for, an agreement to provide for the ownership and maintenance of the rectangular rapid flash beacon, LED crosswalk warning system adjacent to trunk Highway Five and Adam Street, and maintenance agreement.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Batchor introduced resolution ten dash twenty eighteen, it was, uh, seconded by Councilmember Cowell, and that is a resolution authorizing the City of Arlington to enter into an agreement, oopsie, uh, resolution, an agreement to provide for ownership and maintenance of the rectangular rapid flash beacon crosswalk, LED crosswalk system at, uh, Highway Five and Adam, West Adam Street.
Do we know if the batteries have been replaced yet, or they're going to replace them?
Uh, they are going to, I don't believe that they've been replaced quite yet.
What about this crosswalk here, that, is that?
It's already ours.
I've been watching that.
It's already ours.
And in the last week, the thing, I haven't seen it make a mistake. I've been purposely watching it because it did when you'd corner it. I, I haven't caught it making a mistake in the last week, ten days, I don't know if they've got to it, or if it just, but it seems to be working fine.
And just to clarify, that one is already the city's, so.
That is already.
And, and I think MINDOT did take a look at that with Kirby, at the same time that we were taking a look at the Adams.
It seems to be working fine.
Yeah, so I, I think they're willing to help us where they can, in terms of managing. Even after we take over responsibility, I think they'll continue to help out where they can.
Okay, any other questions? Again, the resolution was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Cowell. Hearing none, we'll vote by rule call vote, Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to Maintenance Department Monthly Report, I don't think anyone is here for that. Councilmember, go ahead.
I can go ahead, uh, unfortunately, Kirby was unable to, uh, make it due to, uh, another family type conflict. So, uh, he did go ahead and provide me with a list, which I would be more than happy to read to you, and then if you have any questions, I can certainly take those questions back to Kirby and get, uh, email sent out to you tomorrow, the response. So, in summary, what they've been working on last month or so, uh, making and maintaining ice for the hockey rink and the figure skating rink at the Four Seasons Park. They've been cleaning downtown roads, sidewalks, and cities after lighter snowfalls that we've been having recently. To date yet, he has not had a call out for contractors or trucks for hauling. It's all been done, uh, basically by him and Mike, so, uh, I think they did call in a temp, uh, that they have came and helped this last weekend, maybe, uh, salting, sanding roads. Uh, he commented that it doesn't work very well with compact snow and, and the extreme cold. Uh, he's looking forward to the coming warmup to try and get some of that snow loose and off the roads. Uh, also, as you probably noticed when you walked in, uh, he's been working on the stripping and waxing the, uh, community center floors here, so they hope to finish that up probably, uh, the end of this week. Uh, it was kind of a downtime in terms of reservations, so, uh, it worked out very well for them to, to do that at this time. In the process of picking up and chipping Christmas trees, and they'll be doing that through the twelfth of, uh, January. They've worked on several streetlights, uh, some of those problems go back to just the fact that it's so bitter cold, and some of the problems that we've had with Johnson controls, so they haven't been able to fix all of them, but, uh, uh, worked on some of them. Issues that they have coming up for building maintenance, uh, they're waiting to take down Christmas lights. Once the temperatures get a little warmer next week, they'll work on that. I've been working with Kirby on a DNR, uh, uh, grant for trees, so he's been helping out in terms of identifying where we have trees planted, and we have submitted, uh, an application for Tree City. I'm hopeful, uh, that we'll hear the results, uh, sometime in the near future. So we ran into a few challenges in terms of having a, a public event. We advertised, and we tried to get people, but there weren't a lot of individuals attending, so. That, uh, I don't know for sure, uh, but that could be maybe a challenge, but I'm hoping that we're able to overcome, overcome that, working with the gal that, uh, coordinates it, so, uh, very hopeful there. Uh, they're also waxing the Lion Center, the tile floor there, um, with the TSE building now being pu- listed with FAI auctions. Uh, I've asked, uh, Kirby and Mike if they'd be willing to go in there and just clean, clean up, clean it up a little bit. I mean, there's a lot of things that can be done without a lot of effort, but it just is more warm and inviting to somebody who's thinking about that for a future, uh, purchase of a building. He's installing a vent and a hot water for the pressure washer back at the Public Works shop, and then, uh, they are getting a OSHA required eyewash station in the shop. So those are just a few things that, uh, are keeping the, uh, Maintenance Department busy during these days.
Okay.
Is there any questions, I can certainly follow up with Kirby and get back to you, or?
Any questions on the report? Thank you, Pat.
Sounds like the boys have been keeping busy.
I, I think so, I think so, I think, uh, Mike is a good, uh, fit, and, uh, I think Kirby and you have been working well together.
I'd kinda like to see the Christmas decorations stay up till Valentine's Day. No?
If the, if the temperature is warmer, I'm sure Kirby will be agreeable.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Well, I just had one thing, the two guys able to keep up with all the chores they need to get done?
You know, I know it's been a real busy time with, uh, arlo dazzle, and with lights, and with all those things, but, uh, I think they're trying to keep, I think, I, talking with Kirby, I think things will hopefully, you know, they're not gonna have a lot of free time, but I think things are going to slow down, 'cause they're at a pretty, there are a lot of requests being given to them, you know, in December, and you never know what's gonna happen with the snowfalls, that always bumps in and knocks other things out of, pushes them back, so, I, I think they're doing okay. Right now, I know there are times when Kirby's told me it sure would be nice to have more help, and that's, I'm hoping, uh, something that we can provide through the, uh, yeah, EMT position, so, provide, you know, a person here and, here and there to help out with some of that, so.
Things should get a little better for him too, he was so far behind, not of any fault of his, but going in until Mike was hired. I mean, all they're doing is playing ketchup.
Yeah, yeah.
And sooner or later, the ketchup should be, they'll go into next holiday season, a heck of a lot better shape than they did this year.
Yeah, no.
And that should help them immensely.
How is the ice coming along at the, the, have you seen that at all?
It's, it's pretty good, it's pretty good, you have the pond on the outside, uh, eh, but with all this cold weather, I'm sure it's.
Oh, man, this is the time to make ice.
I'm sure it's good, so.
I know the first, first few times they flooded it, it soaked in, 'cause the ground wasn't froze yet, so they, they just couldn't get a good firm bed of ice down, but I think now it should be good.
We found, uh, somebody to tend to, tend, uh.
The day I stopped in, uh, Jen Strack's daughter was there, and I think, and this was Thursday or Friday, probably of last year, so over the weekend, it was gonna be Jen Strack's family. Uh, Jen, her daughter, her husband, uh, because obviously, they didn't find anybody else to do it, so. So that, that still is a concern, with finding enough help to man that. But it's very comfortable in there, I walked in and I thought, oh, wow, this is, you know, the skaters have got it really nice, you know, with the new heating system, and, uh, it's, it's very comfortable. Big improvement, so. Okay, anything else on that? If not, let us, uh, move into Councilmember Committee Updates, anything in that category? Anyone?
Well, um, city administrator Melvin just gave my report on the Maintenance Department.
Verbatim, right?
Verbatim, I mean, this is how I wrote it, wasn't it? And I think, uh, Adam Call and myself, we, uh, um, met with the prospective candidates for second chief. Second Assistant Chief, um, uh, that was interesting, and, and a decision was made, as you can see, in the, uh, in the resolutions, and, um, I think hopefully, everybody's happy at the Fire Department, and things will keep moving on.
Anything else? Okay, if not, um, I have one item under open discussions, we certainly can talk about other items, but, uh, that involves the the mayoral goals, and I've decided I'm gonna switch it up a little bit this year. I started thinking about, um, putting goals together, and then, you know, uh, I thought, hey, you know, those five council members are the ones that are gonna have to act on those goals, or one, the ones that are gonna have to support. So what I'm gonna ask is that each of you, between now and next Monday, submit to city administrator Melvin, not any goals, but priorities, what would you like to see accomplished during twenty eighteen? If each of you could submit at least three, probably no more than five, 'cause some of them are gonna be duplicates, and uh, no later than next Monday. That way, administrator Melvin and I can go over those. I, I will also be submitting three or four of my own, and, um, we'll see where, where all of you feel the emphasis should be for the year. What do you wanna see happen? What do you think should be, we should, uh, accomplish in twenty eighteen? Some of it will, like I found out the first year, I had all these lofty goals, but I found out there wasn't any funding put in place for those items, so, you know, it's a little hard then. But, um, so if I would, that's what I would like to see happen between now and, and, uh, the end of the day on Monday. So that I can come back at the next council meeting, uh, probably with a half a dozen or more priorities based on what you submit.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
Cause I, I thought, you know, these are items that evidently you individually think enough about to put it down on paper. And if you think enough about it to put it down on paper, probably you're gonna, uh, if it, if that is one of the priorities, you're probably gonna throw your support behind it too, so. I think it's, it, to me, it's more meaningful coming from you, so. If you could do that, I would appreciate it, and again, between three and five or so items of priority items for twenty eighteen to city administrator Melvin, no later than Monday.
Like on this coming Monday?
Monday, January eighth. So that we can sort of go through it on Tuesday and Wednesday and come up with a, a list for you to see on the sixteenth. That's, the meetings are sort of close, they seem close together, but, uh, sixteenth is our next meeting, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, day after, the day after Martin Luther King Day. Okay, any other items under open discussion? Hearing none, a motion is in order to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Haddelstead to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned at seven forty-four. And when you do submit those, you don't have to have a big explanation about what you're, you know, why you think it's a worthy priority. Cause I don't intend to put.